So we have two proclamations on the by the chief of police in regard to the ongoing circumstances occurring both here in the city and our country. Day of the 2020 OUSD graduate. Whereas 2020 gave way to unprecedented circumstances which prohibited typical high school graduation, year end activities, and celebrations. And whereas the Oceanside Unified School District students have adapted and excelled in distance learning structures. And whereas the senior class of 2020 has exhibited incredible strength and resilience, they have persevered and risen to the challenges before them. And whereas these seniors have worked hard to reach this milestone of graduation. And whereas the senior class of 2020 makes our community and district proud of their commitment to responsible citizenship in this unprecedented time of COVID-19. And whereas there are a total of 1,058 graduating seniors and 154 are graduating with honors and many have accepted, have been accepted to various prestigious colleges, universities, and some have chosen to serve our country in the military. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Peter Weiss, mayor of the city of Oceanside, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby declare June 11th, 2020 to be day of the 2020 OUSD graduate. And I encourage all citizens to support and recognize the efforts this graduating class has put forth and wish them all the best in their future endeavors. And I'll Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Well, I want to say, go Pirates. And what are you going to say, Jack? Go Wildcats? Well, this was the first year that we were actually going to have June Pride Month in the month that it usually is with the rest of the country. That's June. Sorry. I'm here to talk about June Pride Month here in Oceanside. In the past, it has been, let me just take this off here. In the past, it has been in October. And this was going to be the first year that we have it in June, Pride in Oceanside, to coincide with other cities and with the rest of the country. In fact, this would have been at the same time as four other cities in North County, cities of Carlsbad, Encinitas, Vista, and Escondido, all doing the very same kind of proclamation in support of gay pride. So I'm very, very proud. Unfortunately, Max Disposti, the executive director of our LGBTQ Resource Center, wasn't able to come and/or do a video because he would have to do one for five cities. So he's gone ahead and asked me to do the "whereas's." So here we go. Proclamation supportive June Pride Month in Oceanside. As we celebrate and declare June as Pride Month in Oceanside, we are reminded that we stand with a lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community in our own city of Oceanside as they declare their own pride in who they are and who they love. June Pride Month is a birth of pride celebrations. We honor the fight of the LGBTQ community through so many years of demanding acceptance and respect at great personal risk to themselves. These protests inspired pride celebrations around the world and sparked the LGBTQ civil rights movement in America. While there has been remarkable progress towards equality in recent years, members of the LGBTQ community in the United States and in the world still face unacceptable levels of discrimination and violence. Transgender women of color in America continue to be killed in disproportionate numbers by transphobia, hate, and racist violence and continue to seek justice. Whereas the city of Oceanside is a multicultural, diverse community comprised of residents and visitors who come from all walks of life and from all over the world. And whereas the city of Oceanside promotes a respectful and inclusive environment where all diversities are respected, included, and celebrated. And whereas the North County LGBTQ Resource Center was founded in 2008 along with its North County Pride, that's Pride by the Beach, and has been an advocate for equality and inclusiveness while providing valuable support and lifesaving services in all the North San Diego County region. And whereas since 2008, the LGBTQ Resource Center has served thousands of people every year through counseling services, LGBT competency training to police, hospitals and school districts, human trafficking prevention, services for homeless youth and families, veterans and active duty military support, and so much more. And whereas healthy and dynamic communities in the USC LGBT centers as the drive behind business development, safety, inclusiveness, and pride in our country's heritage and diversity. And whereas pride events in all cities contribute greatly to the local economy, including businesses, tax revenues, and tourism, as well as create a positive and inclusive image of the city. And last "whereas," whereas the North County LGBTQ Resource Center founded and has hosted North County Pride, Pride by the Beach, events in Oceanside every year since 2007. And this year will be held as a virtual event on Saturday, June 13th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for the raising of the flag. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Weiss, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby declare June 2020 as Pride Month in the city of Oceanside, welcoming and encouraging all North San Diego County communities and LGBTQ families and individuals to virtually come and celebrate together with us this day of June 13th, on the day of June 13th, 2020, dated June 3rd, 2020, at Oceanside, California. And I'm just so very proud that we can do this as a North County region. Thank you.
That, Chief McCoy? If you, sir?
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today and to share a message that I put out with the, to the community via our social media, both on the police department and the city's websites. So I'd like to share the letter today just for those that may not have had the opportunity to, to listen, but more importantly, to understand the views that I have as a police chief for our officers in our city. Dear Oceanside residents, the events surrounding the tragic death of Mr. George Floyd in Minneapolis are some of the most alarming and upsetting circumstances that I've seen in my 37 years in law enforcement. It's important to me that I let the Oceanside community know that my impressions of what I saw on the video and my expectations of the men and women of the Oceanside Police Department. I am extremely disturbed by the use of a knee and body weight on Mr. Floyd's neck. This is not an acceptable method of restraint. And our officers specifically are taught that the neck is known to be a very vulnerable area and is to be avoided at all costs. Given that Mr. Floyd was already in handcuffs applying force to his neck as contrary to any legitimate training. Above all, my officers have the responsibility and the wellbeing of, for the care and wellbeing of any person that is taken into custody. Under my leadership, I expect my officers on scene to intervene if they witness any unnecessary force being used. These expectations are also reinforced in the ongoing training that we provide to our officers and the policies within our department manual. For years now, our training has included de-escalation concepts and the exercise of sound judgment. I also expect my officers to treat everyone equally and with respect. I personally interview every police officer applicant prior to being hired and talk specifically about my expectations of how people are to be treated in our community. The Oceanside Police Department values its relationship and partnership with our community. And it is our job to provide a sense of safety and security to those who are committed, who we are committed to protect. I have the utmost confidence in the training of our officers and with the leaders in my department, which continually uphold our high, our high standards of conduct. Please know that I acknowledge the community's sadness and outrage regarding these latest events and how it may cause you to question your trust in our profession. Our officers will continue to work hard to maintain your trust and remain steadfast in providing the level of service and protection that you expect from your police department. And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to read another letter that just went out today on social media. And this is in regards to the carotid restraint, if you would allow me to read that letter as well. Dear Oceanside residents, as the police chief of Oceanside, I have made the decision to ban the carotid restraint, commonly referred to as a chokehold, as a restraining option for our officers. I am aware that this particular restraint option has been and continues to be considered unacceptable in many communities. It is time for our department to focus on alternative de-escalation tools and techniques that will help ensure the safety of those individuals in our custody. The Oceanside Police Department is committed to continuing to provide our officers with extensive training on de-escalation tactics and promoting new tools as appropriate alternatives. Our department is committed to listening and learning from the community as well as continually improving our relationship through each and every interaction with those that we protect and serve. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for allowing me to read these two letters. I think that they are important for the community to understand what the police department feels in regards to what happened, as well as our never-ending continuing efforts in looking at our restraint techniques and ensuring the wellbeing of those that we have in our custody. Thank you. And I have a statement. I'm not sure if any of my colleagues want to join in after this, but I'd like to say that we are saddened and angered by the senseless death of George Floyd. We offer our deepest sympathies and prayers to his family, the community of Minneapolis, and all those across the country who are grieving. Californians have been touched by this killing that threatens the collective progress we've made in fostering trust between law enforcement and the diverse communities that they serve. It is my hope that the justice system will honor Mr. Floyd's life by holding accountable those responsible for his death. I'm grateful to our police department, who are keeping our residents and communities safe during these painful and difficult times. There is no place for those who are exploiting the circumstances with looting and violence, and we hope they end that process and continue their peaceful protests as they have every right to do. Thank you.
I have a statement too.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. And I think that we all have felt the horror of having an actual video of the torture and the killing of a black man by white police officers. Nine days ago, the world witnessed the most extreme brutality of racism, the torture and killing of George Floyd, a black man, while bound and tied, suffocating under the weight and at the hands of three white police officers. I stand with Black Lives Matter and the Floyd family in demanding justice. I stand with the African-American community of my hometown of Oceanside, who are feeling the pain and suffering of centuries of slavery, racism, and disparate treatment. This is a shocking reminder, as if we needed to be reminded, that none of us are free until every corner of our country is free. We stand together. In Oceanside, we've worked hard to address disparate treatment by our police department. In 2006, a few members of our communities of color met with then newly appointed Chief Frank McCoy and urged him to implement community policing. He promised us that he would make every police officer within the department a community police officer, that it would become a desirable position so that the best officers would want to apply, until every single one was a community police officer. He made good on that promise. We urged him to recruit and train officers that are reflective of our diverse community. And we urged him to address equality issues within the department and in the community with community liaisons. This is a very different police department from 20 years ago. Equality training has been implemented with community liaisons, an integral part of the organization. This is an ongoing process, and we must be vigilant. We are a diverse community. In this month of June alone, we would be celebrating the 19th Annual Phil Am Cultural Celebration, right here in our civic center, but for the pandemic. We would be celebrating the 24th Annual San Luis Rey Mission Intertribal Powwow, always held the second weekend of June. We would be celebrating Juneteenth by the North San Diego County NAACP, an organization that was started in Oceanside in 1965, 55 years ago. In September, October, we would celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month with several festivities, including the 16th Annual Noche Mexicana. And in November, we celebrate, we would celebrate our city's Native American roots of the Liseno Band of Mission Indians via proclamation in honor of National Native American Hispanic Heritage Month. Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. On June 19th, 1865, Major General Gordon Granger landed in Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended and that slavery, that slaves were now free. This was fully two and a half years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, which became effective on January 1st, 1863. Justice should never be delayed, and we must always stand together. Thank you.
Protest is the language of the unheard, and there are too many American voices going unheard. Without question, we must do better. I can't believe that we are still facing such blatant discrimination in 2020. The days of turning a blind eye to the mainstream, to the mistreatment of men and women of color must end today. Our children deserve to live in a world where they don't feel the need to put their guards up when they see a police officer. This future is only possible when all of us take these horrific instances personally and stand up for what's right. All across our nation, people of all backgrounds are standing together in unity. This is what Dr. Martin Luther King dreamed of. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
As a former Oceanside police officer, I was hired by Chief McCoy shortly after he came from Long Beach. And so after hearing what my colleague, Councilmember Sanchez, said and what the chief said, I can, I only want to echo that. Oceanside has done an incredible job of being a community police department. We have done, we have made that a priority as it should be. I was part of our community policing team. And the different interactions we have with our community in building trust by transparency and partnerships has been incredible, but it doesn't mean that it stops there. It's our continuing effort to do better, improve training, improve hiring, and it's going to be a challenge going forward, but that's what our citizens deserve. You know, we, I truly believe we hire the best officers, we train them the best, but then most importantly, we also hold them accountable. And we expect the best for them. We're going to continue to do that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. I will echo all of my colleagues. I live with the threat of racism, and just in my family. They are the greatest advocates for peace, and I just can't tell you how proud I am of, of a family that is so strong that this hurts their heart, these protests, and for the need for it, the need for having the, the protest to right wrongs that seem to happen all too often. And, and I'm, I'm with, our police department and our management staff for this city are second to none as far as the, the treatment of people and the effort they put into making sure that Oceanside is a great place to live, work, worship, and play. I can't thank the, the public safety enough for, for keeping this safe. And I'm, I think that's probably what's going to, to stand out most as we go through the end of this pandemic and that we are going to survive because of what we have done for the community members in this city. I just, I just thank my colleagues for expressing it and, and that we are all on the same page. With that, God bless America and Oceanside.
With that, we'll get to the business of the council. Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. I'll give the closed session report for both the regular council meeting at 3:30 and then the concurrent special meeting that was held as well. The council met in closed session to discuss the status of labor negotiations with the Western Council of Engineers, the Oceanside Fire Association, Oceanside Fire Management Association, and the management employees of the city of Oceanside. There was discussion and direction on each four of the groups, but no action to report under the Brown Act. The council also met to discuss two real property items. The first involved 3131 Oceanside Boulevard, negotiating parties, city and Oceanside Unified School District. There is no action to report on that item. Also, the council met on 1403 Mission Avenue, negotiating parties, city, and solutions for change. Again, there's no action to report under the Brown Act for that real property item. Council did meet on conference with litigator on the workers' compensation cases involving Anthony Chapman. Those are cases 17132069 and 14548346. There was discussion and direction, preliminary approval of a resolution, but no final action to report under the Brown Act at this time. Finally, with respect to the special meeting, the city council met in closed session to discuss a threat to public facilities and to hear a briefing from the police chief. And again, nothing else to report beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you. That will go to our consent calendar, which are items five through 16. Mr. Navarro, do we have any?
We only had one public item on number 14, but they did not wish for their comment to be read into the record at this time.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I'd like to pull 10 for just some brief comments. And also just want to say on 15, I'm, I just want to comment, it can go as part of this whole thing, that I'm very pleased that we were able to receive the $145,000 for the one-year supportive housing program, renewal, renewable grant through HUD for the Women's Resource Center. I'm very, very happy to see that. There's never a guarantee that we're going to see that come through. And it is for the Women's Resource Center for the operation of the 21-unit transitional house, transition house. I'm just very proud that we have this relationship that, you know, it's a one-year, $1 a year lease. They do tremendous work, and, and they have to come up with a 25% match. So they're nonprofits. So I'm really happy about that. So I'm going to move approval for all except for item number 10.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I would like to pull item 16.
So we have a motion for, we'll include 16 in that. Let's please vote on the balance. I'll second it. Motion approved, 5-0. Item 10?
Thank you. On, on item 10, that is approval amendment one to the purchase and sale agreement with Concordia Communities for the sale of city-owned vacant land located at the terminus of Paula Road near Los, Los Arbolitos Boulevard to delete a reference to the construction of single-story residential homes and to change the effective date of the agreement from September 25th, 2019, to June 3rd, 2020. And my, my brief comments are these. I had been, or we have as, as a city council, city of Oceanside and the community, had been in discussions for several years with respect to the two, those two properties. One that is labeled as environmentally sensitive and the other as usable. And what the community has been doing is actually using one, and it only takes one of those parcels to be preserved for, for habitat. And so the community had always wanted to use to flip the two properties. And so that is why I'm going to go ahead and vote no on this, because I think we should have had more of a public process. Thank you.
I'll move approval of item 10. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
16. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to bring some attention to this item. I think this is huge for the city of Oceanside. Back at our, just a little history quickly, back at our April 1st meeting, we were in discussions on different ways of helping our small businesses. And I know surrounding cities have more formal policies on the public donating real property, cash contributions, funds to the city. And so we wanted to, I made a motion, we got support on the dais. Staff has done a phenomenal job of actually creating a policy with respect to the city of Oceanside accepting donations and gifts, which by the way are tax deductible. Is that correct, John Mullen?
Yeah, as long as they're used for a public purpose, and presumably every gift to the city would be for a public purpose.
Wonderful. So you can get your, your tax-deducted donations. Again, the purpose of this policy to establish guidelines and formal process for accepting gifts and donations to the city in a responsible, transparent, and accountable manner. This policy provides guidelines when individuals, community groups, and businesses wish to make donations to the city. This policy, this policy also establishes the standards for city employees and city officials regarding the acceptance of these gifts. And so I think this is a, this is a great move. I'm glad that this is on the consent calendar, and I'm hopeful we'll get full support on this. And I have a question for the city manager with respect to getting this out there as a more public item to the community. For example, we could have leveraged something like this to the private sector on making donations to help small businesses. They could have made those donations, and we could have participated with something a little, you know, we could have done that, but this kind of sets the stage for that. And so any plans on having this on the website somewhere or, or a page specific for this for individuals that can, you know, easily donate if they decide to, to the city?
So Councilmember Rodriguez, mayor, and council members, all council policies are posted to the website, but in this case, we can certainly provide additional information on our COVID-19 webpage. And as appropriate, whenever an emergency occurs or an event occurs, we can make sure that we do share information with the community as appropriate at that time.
I think I was more, thank you for that. I was more leaning toward a consistent, static page that's available and easily accessible for public view, for individuals that want to know how to donate to our city.
Councilmember, we can certainly take a look and see what might be appropriate.
Wonderful. Thank you. So I would like to make a motion on item 16 for approval.
Second?
Motion and a second. Please vote. Motion approved, 5-0. We'll go, Rob's already there. What if I go to Mr. Toshack? We'll go to item 17, which is adoption of a resolution approving the compensation plan for unrepresented employees. Rob?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the city council, Robert O'Brien, Human Resources Director. Before you this evening is a proposed revision to the existing compensation plan for unrepresented employees that was originally approved and adopted in July of 2019. Now, as a result of the unprecedented socioeconomic impact COVID-19 has had on the state, the county, and within our own city of Oceanside, there still remains a level of fiscal uncertainty. As such, it is recommended that the approved 2% base salary increase scheduled the first paid period in July 2020 for all executive and unrepresented middle management employees be deferred for a period of 12 months. This deferral will impact 50 of the 116 unrepresented benefited employees, including the city manager and the city attorney. manager and the city attorney. The general fund portion of the salary savings for the 2020-2021 fiscal year is estimated to be $161,000. All other provisions of the previously adopted compensation plan will remain unaffected. So in conclusion, the recommendation this evening is to adopt the resolution revising the compensation plan for unrepresented employees effective June 3, 2020, to reflect the proposed 12-month deferral of the scheduled 2% base salary increases for all executives and unrepresented middle-management personnel. Thank you for your time and attention, and I'll be available for any questions you may have.
Any public?
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I just want to say, I want to thank the executive and management employees that we have for the City of Oceanside. They understand where we are at in terms of COVID-19, the pandemic, and the uncertainty that we have. And we have cut already, as part of the, I should say, the proposal is to cut vacant positions that are currently vacant to be able to pass a balanced budget. But this is an additional sacrifice on behalf of our management employees. So thank you very much, and I move approval.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Go to 18, which is authorization to award a contract in amount of 4.6 million for the annual overlay project. Mr. Toshack?
Honorable Mayor, council members, David Toshack, Principal Engineer, Development Services, Engineering Division. The general item today is for the award of a public works agreement in the amount of $4,622,512 to ATP General Engineering Contractors and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. The project was planned, expected for the project to be approved by the city engineer, and a call for bid was advertised on April 22. We opened bids publicly on May 12 and received three bids. The lowest qualified bidder is ATP General Engineering Contractors. What I mean by qualified bid is, what I refer to as lowest qualified bidder is the bidder that after staff analyzed the bids, we found to be responsive to the contract documents. So they were, you know, met all the requirements, insurances, and clauses for the contract. The streets were selected using our city pavement management program and citizens' comments. This couple of work includes two-inch grind and overlay of various streets and a full-depth reclamation of streets to rebuild the worn-out asphalt and recycling. This is new to the city. We're kind of excited about it. It simply reduces costs and amount of hauling of materials in and out of a site by recycling the materials that are on the site and using the existing streets. The locations this year in District 1, and again, this is a citywide project and is kind of combined with our slurry seal project to combine to make our pavement management program. So our overlay program consists of Mission from the I-5 Bridge to Horn and the Rancho Hermosa Community. This Rancho Hermosa Community is where we'll be doing the full-depth reclamation along with Industry Street in District 3. District 2, we'll be doing a lot of slurry seal projects. That's again, putting the slurry seal to preserve the pavements that are in good condition. That will be presented to you on June 17 for award of that contract for the summer as well. District 4 is the westbound Oceanside Boulevard from Corporate Center to Rancho Del Oro. Our overlay projects have and will continue to include ADA ramps. While we're doing our pavements along the streets, we have to look at ADA compliance ramps that might be outdated, so we replace ramps as we go along those areas and street segments. The construction is scheduled for early summer to late fall. This is a slight change in the way we look at work. For years, we were doing work near the end of the year into the winter time to minimize public inconvenience. But we find that working in the summer months with warmer temperatures helps the asphalt, and I think we're going to get a better service life. So we won't be going back to streets in, you know, 12, 15 years. We might be able to get a 20-year service life on these streets by doing the work in the summertime. Temperature is very important to the way we lay, to the delivery of asphalt, to the way it's laid down, to the way it's broken down, recompacted. So we really look forward to taking advantage of the warmer months. The engineers' estimate was $4.9 million. This is kind of important to us because the way we bid the project was a base bid with bid alternatives. Since the amounts came in from the bids were low enough to include the alternates, we did. So this is sometimes we give ourselves some flexibility to award based on the costs that come in. Sometimes they're kind of volatile with the environment that we're in. So we're lucky enough to be adding the bid alternatives this time. The funding sources are Transnet, SB1, and Measure X. And SB1 and Measure X are about $2 million each toward the $5 million worth of effort that we're going to make this year. So staff recommends to city council that we award the contract to ATP General Engineering Contractors in the amount of $4,622,512. And we ask that, and recommend that authorization of the city manager once we get the supporting documents.
Thank you.
That completes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
We have any public?
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I'm, we usually just do it with Transnet dollars, and I'm really happy that we're able to have SB1 and Measure X funding for this to be able to, because this is very critical work, especially after those rains that we had. So I'm going to move staff's approval, staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Fowler?
I'll second. David, I couldn't tell in my reading, because it's a fairly short makeup, but Rancho Hermosa, are you slurry sealing those streets, or is that going to be overlay?
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Fowler, this location is where we'll be doing the full-depth reclamation. So we're actually going in there, bringing a grinding machine, taking the materials that's there, grinding it into the subgrade along with the subgrade, and then coming in with an overlay on top of that product. So it's a little more extensive than our typical overlay. Our typical overlay will grind the edge, and we'll grind the transition joints and just put asphalt on top of the existing asphalt. In this case, we're actually kind of restoring the pavement underneath the asphalt and bringing a new riding course on top of that.
Yeah, their streets have deteriorated severely, so I was hoping it was that. I couldn't, I couldn't tell from the, and Industry Street will look like a whole new shopping or industrial area if you get.
Yeah, and the full-depth reclamation, Deputy Mayor, is good for that location because we're able to put traffic on our way. It's like we're digging a big hole and then not being able to put the industrial equipment onto the concrete trucks and the waste management trucks on there. You can get traffic back on that road sooner.
Okay, very good.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Mr. Navarro, do we have anything on 23?
On item number 23, we had seven comments, and only, I believe, two or three wanted to be read into the record. We currently have only two comments wanting to be read into the record. So for item number 23, our first public comment is from Terri Ann Skelly. "Good evening, mayor and city council members. On May 18, at the planning commission, the agenda item regarding marijuana manufacturing site was postponed. The staff had recommended a denial to the applicant's CUP request because he was in violation of the city's and California's permitting laws. As a parent of three young adult sons, I share with you my great concern that marijuana availability, visibility, and commercialization will sabotage the lives of young people. I'm encouraging my sons to get a good education and jobs. I appreciate it when the city supports these efforts through the businesses you choose to enable and encourage, and marijuana businesses should not be on your list. Besides the negative consequences of marijuana use, it is important to remember that COVID-19 attacks the lungs and could be a serious threat to those smoking and vaping marijuana. American Lung has clearly warned that smoking vaping marijuana and tobacco clearly damages the lungs and suppresses the immune system, which affects the ability to fight off the disease. Thank you for your consideration of the young adults of Oceanside. Terri Ann Skelly." And our next public comment is from Cindy Rocco. "Stand strong, Oceanside. Stand for the people of Oceanside and open the doors to city hall chambers right now, and stop cutting the public off because it's easier when they don't waste your time talking to you. City council is essential, particularly since the midst of COVID state of emergency, that people want to know even more about what is happening. But interestingly, everything else appears business as usual. Lots of things can get done without the proverbial public interruption. Just remember that as Jim Chano says, 'When we shake out the blanket, fraud will reveal itself quite easily, and with each of you only politically dancing to get support is blatant and disturbing.' Lots of last-minute raises and purchases and developments and financial policy changes, et cetera, et cetera, are all happening, so then it should be back to business as usual with three-minute public speeches instead of 50 words so that government can breeze through their business as usual. If it is business as usual for a little COVID on the side, then open the chamber doors. Stand strong for all the people of Oceanside, not just the Cherries.'" Cindy Rocco. And that concludes the public comment.
May I ask a question on that particular one? I was going to bring it up in my own personal comments, but I, you know, frankly, I miss him being in the audience. So is there a timeframe you are thinking of, or is it, are you just waiting for Chicken Little?
Deputy Mayor, Mayor, and council members, the county's public health order currently does not allow gatherings. And so I specifically asked the question of Dr. Wooton on our weekly call last week. She indicated she does expect there will be a gradual lifting of the gathering limits, such as was implemented, you know, 10 to 50 to 250, but she did not know the timing of what that might be. We have prepared a reopening plan for the council chambers based on those increases being allowed, along with staging for folks to be able to come in and out for public comment and so forth, but we're not able to launch that plan until they amend the public health order.
Okay. Thank you.
And with that, we will take a break until 6 o'clock when we come back with our public hearings. Item 19, which is the adoption and acceptance and approval of a whole series of actions in regards to the city's 2020-2021 budget. I will open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
I've had plenty of meetings with staff.
Numerous meetings with staff and the community.
Staff, we had workshops, community input, through emails.
Staff, all the meetings that we've had, and also from the public.
Staff, community.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure you're ready for me. Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. Deanna Larson, city manager. I would like, before I start the presentation, to acknowledge Jane McPherson, Financial Services Director, and Cindy Gersley, our Budget Manager, because they really do all the work to pull all this together, working closely with me and all the department heads, but handling all of the detail work. And we couldn't do it without both of them putting in many, many hours, and I thank them for that. And so for tonight's budget hearing, we are requesting that you adopt resolutions to approve the appropriations limit for fiscal year 2021, approve the fiscal year 2021 operating budget, including all of the enterprise funds, approve the fiscal year 2021 capital improvements program budget and the AB 1600 compliance report and findings, approve the fiscal year 2021 Community Development Commission budget, and approve the Small Craft Harbor District operating and CIP budgets. And I would note that the recommended budgets do incorporate the council direction that was provided at the April 29, 2020 budget workshop. And so in terms of an overview, the forecast has been revised for the COVID-19 impacts to both revenue and then adjusted expenditures accordingly. Our budget, proposed budget uses fiscal year 1920 as a base with a 10% reduction in our maintenance and operations budget. It maintains service levels and continues our cost containment efforts. And we believe that this is a prudent approach due to our current budget uncertainty as well as rising CalPERS rates. We are meeting all of our reserve obligations pursuant to all the adopted council policies, and the budget does continue to reflect the council's strategic priorities. The proposed budget is almost essentially the same in terms of revenues from fiscal year 1920 to fiscal year 2021 at $158 million, and expenditures as well, a very slight increase from $157.6 million to $157.7 million with a projected surplus of about $325,000. It does include all of the budget workshop items, but it does not include your action earlier tonight to suspend the COLAs for executive and unrepresented middle-management. In terms of our projected revenues, we really spent a lot of time looking at economic projections, working with our sales tax consultant and our visitor industry to come up with projections for revenue in our major categories. Property tax is forecast to continue to increase. This is due to the past few years of property sales as well as new construction. It does take several years for property transfers and new construction to even make it on to the construction rules, and there are no forecasted declines in property tax revenue at this time. Sales tax is forecast to decline approximately 8% at this time, and our transient occupancy tax, we're forecasting approximately a 30% decline for next fiscal year. Our proposed expenditure budget is $157.7 million. As I mentioned previously, it's based on the fiscal year 1920 budget with a reduction of $2.1 million in our maintenance and operation budgets and $1.34 million in our internal service funds. It also includes $4.3 million in salary savings from vacant funded positions. It does include all negotiated and known personnel and benefit increases, including PERS. There is a placeholder for the MOUs and compensation plans that are currently in negotiation or will be during the fiscal year, and as previously mentioned, it does meet all reserve requirements. Our cost containment measures include a freeze on recruitment and replacement hiring. This is being managed on a citywide basis where only critical positions are being approved for filling, and that is happening at the city manager's office, where we evaluate each position for its necessity and for its impacts. There is a freeze on employee travel for conferences and training. We, as I've mentioned, we reduce maintenance and operation budgets by 10%. We continue to explore contracting out services wherever feasible, and it does follow council policies 2011 and 2013 to pay down the city's CalPERS obligation. In terms of PERS, the proposed budget accommodates the numbers we receive from PERS, which is a five-year forecast of an average of $1.84 million per year in net new CalPERS increases over the next five years. The costs for- There is a freeze on employee travel for conferences and training. We, as I've mentioned, we reduce maintenance and operation budgets by 10%. We continue to explore contracting out services wherever feasible, and it does follow council policies 2011 and 2013 to pay down the city's CalPERS obligation. In terms of PERS, the proposed budget accommodates the numbers we receive from PERS, which is a five-year forecast of an average of $1.84 million per year in net new CalPERS increases over the next five years. The costs for fiscal year 2021 are $25 million, approximately increasing to about $32.6 million in fiscal year 2425. Any investment losses that they do experience from the current year will not be reflected in the rates for two to three years, although I would note that they have recovered some of their initial losses, and so that is still an unknown as how they will fare this year. And then on the plus side, through the prudent guidance of the City Council, we have $11 million in our CalPERS set-aside account in our reserve funds, as well as $10.31 million, actually, I think that is increased a little because of increased earnings, and our Section 115 Trust. Both of those funds are set aside to address increased costs in future years. And so as I mentioned, we did present the draft budget at the workshop on April 29th, 2020. The recommended additions of $286,000 in ongoing costs and $26,000 in one-time costs are included in the proposed budget. And we've also provided the City Council requested information on salary savings, which is in Attachment L in your package, and on council aids, which is included in Attachment M. And we are requesting direction via a motion regarding the council aids. And so this is a balanced budget. It's based on the best information that we have at this time, but it's not a painless budget. Continuing to keep positions vacant does put more stress on our current workforce. It does impact some of our response times. In addition, having cuts to our maintenance operation budgets does require that we find workarounds and we do our best to live within our means. But it is a balanced budget. It is based on the best information we have at this time. And so we are recommending that you adopt resolutions to approve appropriations limit, approve the operating budget, including the enterprise funds, approve the Community Development Commission operating budget, and approve a lump sum prepayment to CalPERS estimated at $17.1 million for our annual required unfunded liability contribution, and that will provide approximately $588,000 in savings that would be applied to our CalPERS unfunded liability. And we do have additional presentations for staff to provide on our CIP budget, our water utilities budget, and our harbor budget. And so we can proceed through those presentations, take questions at the end, or I can take questions on this portion at this time. And of course, we do have staff here available to assist with any questions. Okay. You can do it all at once, yes. So with that, we will have Michael Gosman come up and present on Measure X.
It's quite a process every time you come up. Thank you, sir. Mayor, Council Members, I'll just give you a brief update on Measure X, where we are, what the proposed budget is for year two of the Measure X. As you all are aware, Measure X was approved on November 6th, 2018. It increased the sales tax rate by half a percent, went into effect April 2019. It's really slated for enhanced police and fire services, improved infrastructure and roads, and homeless assistance, although it is a general tax and can be used anywhere. This is what the measure itself laid out. It also specified that a Citizens Oversight Committee would be appointed to advise the council and review spending plans. And on May 14th, 2020, the Measure X Citizens Oversight Committee endorsed and unanimously recommended approval of the fiscal year 2021 Measure X spending plan. The Measure X spending plan for year two, 2021, is $11.2 million. Total revenue available for year two is roughly $14.8 million. This includes adjustments to projected revenues due to the COVID-19 impacts of the economy. So they were, we did have higher projections, but we reduced those based on advice from our sales tax consultant. So $3.6 million will be carried over into year three for future projects or ongoing construction of existing projects. As I mentioned, the Measure X Citizens Oversight Committee did unanimously recommend this plan for approval. Ongoing year one projects include the homeless outreach team, contract sobering services, enhanced emergency services delivery model, Fire Station One construction, South Strand rehabilitation project, the beachfront improvement project, the Pierview Bridge rehab project, and the Buccaneer Beach Park facility study. I'll note that the last Buccaneer Beach Park facility study, there's no funding for Measure X in year two. We'll continue to fund that in year three. That's delayed for a year. And also, the South Strand rehabilitation project is on hold, no funding for one year, not on hold, but construction delayed, so funding will be in future years. We did secure outside funding sources. We received $77,000 in a grant from the county for homeless social workers, so that created savings for Measure X. The beachfront improvement project grant received $7.8 million from the state, and that supplants $4 million in what would have been Measure X funds. Staff will continue to aggressively pursue grant opportunities to make the Measure X monies go as far as possible. We were able to increase some projects for year two based on higher-than-expected revenues. One of those projects is downtown information and technology enhancements for cameras and storage systems to deter crime and assist investigations. Also, $300,000 in one-time funds for fire equipment to enhance emergency response and enhance emergency response for lifeguards and firefighter paramedics. We also added $1 million, and this is actually ongoing, for repaving and road repairs. The preliminary seven-year expenditure plan includes a preliminary plan for expenditures for the seven-year duration. Total cost to continuing complete items in the total plan is $84.4 million, which is fully covered by the anticipated revenue. That's actually a turnaround from the original projection in year one, where we thought we would have a pretty significant shortage, but based on the latest information, the latest projections from HDR, our sales tax consultant, that is now showing a surplus, and the grants we've received, they don't hurt that situation either. So again, just to wrap up, the spending plan for year two is $11.2 million, fully supported by the Measure X Citizens Oversight Committee. We'll continue to monitor impacts of COVID-19 to our revenues, and we'll keep the Citizens Oversight Committee and the council apprised of any future adjustments, downward or upward, whichever way they may go. And Measure X recommendation is that we, that the City Council adopt a resolution, Attachment C, approving the fiscal year 2021 Measure X operating budget. And that's the end of that section. So I think I'll bring up Brian Thomas.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. This is a recap of our capital improvement project budget for the current, or the next fiscal year 2021. The overview of our program consists of transnet, thoroughfare, and signals, drainage districts, citywide drainage, SB1 parks, municipal buildings, water, sewer, harbor, Measure X miscellaneous and grant funding sources. Our fiscal year 2021 budget is estimated to be just short of $299 million with almost $93 million in new allocations. The CIP funding includes prior year carryovers for continuing projects, as well as new allocations from the various designated funding sources. Our funding sources include grants, taxes through gas tax, transnet, and SB1, development impact fees, our enterprise funds through sewer, water, and harbor, as well as the general fund. The revenues have been adjusted for COVID-19 declines, including a 20% reduction in gas tax SB1, as well as SADAG revised numbers for transnet. We have included Measure X projects in this final budget. Some of our major new and continuing projects includes our annual slurry seal and overlay projects, the College Boulevard between Vista and Old Grove and Thunder Drive South, road construction, very storm drain improvements, downtown water and sewer line improvements, structural analysis and rehabilitation of reservoirs, Buccaneer Lift Station and Forest Main, San Luis Rey building upgrades, our food waste to energy program, the recycled water line assessment for Fallbrook, our automated meter infrastructure program, as well as Pure Water Oceanside Phase Two. Our pie chart breaks down the approximately $299 million. At this time, staff is recommending City Council approve a resolution for fiscal year 2021 CIP budget under Attachment D, and to accept the annual AB 1600 compliance report and make findings regarding the expenditure of the development impact fees under Attachment A. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Dale.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director, here to present on the three utility budgets for water, sewer, and solid waste utilities. As we discussed at the budget workshop, the budgets for these utilities were developed with infrastructure, development of local water supplies, green infrastructure, and use of recycled water in mind. And for the water utility, the anticipated revenues for the proposed budget reflect increases that were approved last fall and were implemented in January of 2020. That was a 3% increase, as well as an anticipated increase for January of 2021 of 3%. The expenses for the operating budget are very flat, and any additional revenues coming in over the operating expenses will be put to the capital program. The sewer utility also reflects increases that were adopted last fall. These are 2% for each of the two terms, January 2020 and January of 2021. As with the water utility, the expenses in the operating fund are relatively flat. The revenues do reflect the 2% increase that was implemented in January. In the solid waste and recycling utility, revenues reflect a 2.43% advanced CPI, which was effective in January, as well as increased revenues as a result of implementation of the organics rates. The budget also includes the use of $416,000 in reserves, and expenses reflect increased programs that are being implemented as a result of the organics mandates. I did also want to mention COVID-19 impacts to the utility. Right now, we're doing very well. We are considered essential services. We have not had foreseeable impacts on operations. We have implemented several mechanisms to ensure that we do stay healthy and are able to provide services to the public, including staggering our employee shifts, telecommuting for quite a few of our folks, as well as prohibiting some of our large gatherings. On the revenue side, some of the things that have impacted our revenues are an executive order that was signed by the governor restricting water shut-offs during the COVID pandemic. And although staff expects accounts receivables to increase as a result, the delinquent accounts are being monitored. Weekly, and accounts receivable have been, we've been fairly pleased with how the revenues have been coming in. We are anticipating increased revenues, excuse me, increased write-offs for fiscal year 2122, and we can absorb a small amount of decreased revenues and defer some small projects in the future if needed. With that, staff's recommending that City Council adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2021 Water Utilities operating budget included in Attachment B. And with that, I'll ask Lindsay Leahy to come up and do her portion.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Lindsay Leahy, Principal Water Engineer with the Water Utilities Department, here tonight to present the Water Utilities Capital Improvement Project proposed budget. For fiscal year 2021, Water Utilities is proposing a total of $32,725,000 from the Water Fixed Asset Replacement Fund and $92,131,000 from the Water Connection Fund. Additionally, from the Sewer Fixed Asset Replacement Fund, we are proposing a $93,387,000 budget, as well as a $757,000 budget from the Sewer Connection Fund. In total, there are 31 capital projects for the water program included in that budget, and in sewer, there's a total of 42 projects included in that. Water projects are funded from our WIFIA loans, our revenue bonds, grants that staff has received, as well as developer fees and user rates, which are comprised of water sales and meter charges. For sewer, our sewer projects are funded by WIFIA loans, our developer fees, and our user rates, which are also comprised of sewer usage and our fixed charges for those projects. The water program is driven by our council goal to develop 50% local supply by 2030. Our water and recycled water program has received many grants over the last fiscal year, a total of $10,188,000, as well as have about $17 million in pending grant applications to date. I will note that this does not include the WIFIA applications that have been accepted for WIFIA loan, as well as our Metropolitan Water District Local Resources Program funding. So this is solely grants. Another goal for the water, recycled water program is to construct Pure Water Oceanside. This first phase will increase our local water supply 11%. This includes five total construction projects, two of which have already been awarded by council. One is currently out to bid with two other remaining contracts scheduled to come forward in the next few months. The final goal, or the second goal for the water, recycled water program is the construction of the lower recycled water system and complete the design of the upper recycled water system. The construction of the lower conveyance pipeline has been awarded. The design of the upper system is still ongoing. This comprises of 20 miles of pipe, two reservoirs, and two pump stations, and will further contribute to our local supply of water. Our final goal from council for water, recycled water program is improving the reliability of our critical infrastructure. This includes downtown water pipeline replacements, our reservoir seismic upgrades, as well as our new project, our advanced metering infrastructure. For sewer, our goal is to complete the design of Buccaneer Lift Station, which was formerly the La Salina wastewater treatment plant, or will be the La Salina wastewater treatment plant. We are currently at approximately 60% design. This will allow us to centrally locate all of our sewer flows and decommission La Salina in the future. And in addition to our water goal of replacing and rehabilitating aged infrastructure, we have a similar goal for sewer. This also includes the downtown sewer pipeline replacement project, our pipeline rehabilitation program, as well as our lift station upgrades. And with that, staff recommends adopting the resolution approving the fiscal year 2021 Water Utilities CIP budget included in Attachment D. And with that, I'll bring Kyle Kroger, our Public Works Director.
Honorable Mayor, Council Members, Kyle Kroger, Public Works Director. I'm going to quickly run through our Harbor District operating and CIP budget for fiscal year 2021. The majority of our revenue in the harbor comes from three places: the slip renters, the harbor facility leases, and parking. We have some other fees, inspections, and other income. It basically comes up to just under $8.6 million is what we're projecting for the next fiscal year. Our expenditures match that, with the majority of them coming from maintenance staff, police, and our admin staff. We also have a Thai land lease that, it's We also have a Thai land lease that, it's basically the lease that the harbor pays back to the city. Lifeguards, property management, and a couple of other fees that also comes up to just under $8.6 million. The savings that is realized from the difference between the revenues and expenditures is used for our capital improvement projects. And we are currently permitting in design phase of the J-Dock replacement, and we hope to move to construction this next fiscal year. That'll be the big project for the year, and then we have some other smaller projects going forward: parking lot repairs and some riprap design. And with that, staff recommends that the city council adopt resolutions approving the Harbor District Operating and Capital Improvement Program Budget for fiscal year 2021, Attachments G and H. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have public on this?
There is no public.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate staff taking a second, third look into what the current status is of our revenues and anticipating as much as anybody can anticipate in something so novel as a pandemic. This is basically a rollover, but certainly when you have, you can't fill vacancies and you're cutting 10% of the M&amp;O, that is definitely going to be something that we all feel here at City Hall. I know that our employees work very, very hard and care very, very much about the services that they provide the public, and I believe staff did indicate that levels of the response times may be impacted by this. I mean, who knows, maybe later time we can review this if things go back up to where they were going, because we were doing so well. I would like to make a motion with respect to the first nine recommendations from staff, and then perhaps do the council aides as a separate item. So I'd like to go ahead and move adoption of the various resolutions, items one through nine. And I thank the city employees and staff and management as we go through this very tough time, and the public too. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
First, I would like to let the public know that there are thousands of pages and hours that our staff and this body up here have had to go through. And, you know, this is all on our amazing staff here in the city of Oceanside. Ms. McPherson has been working, working, working away with all the department heads and the city manager's office to really fine-tune the financial impacts that COVID-19 is going to have on our city. And I am very pleased with what they've came back with. I think it's the perfect balance of meeting the essential services and items of our city and trimming unneeded fat from our budget, and then some to accommodate, and with mechanisms in place that if more needs to be done, it's ready to go. So I really appreciate that. I'm going to sleep better at night knowing that we're going to adopt this, and we'll take it one month at a time as we see the actual numbers and impacts. But I think that we are prepared to take this on for at least the duration of this approved budget. Did Esther get a second on that? She's made a motion. I want to hear what my other colleagues have to say. I definitely want to discuss a couple items with respect to the council aides and the salary savings. That was a whole new concept that I have had to learn as we move through this, you know, those buffers that are created. And so I have some questions about that, but I'll save that for when we talk about the council aides. But I am really, really happy, and I think the city, the residents should be very happy that all the hard work that was put into making this happen today, this is a lot of information. Thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
I have a couple of questions that came to my mind. One is, we'll start with Kyle since he was last up there. What are the parking lot repairs that we need?
Deputy Mayor Feller, we have about 12 parking lots in the harbor, so it's just some maintenance of those lots.
Just not total repaving or anything like?
It'll probably be some slurry sealing and striping and fairly minor stuff.
Okay. That's what I thought. For the, that's all I need you for, sir. For the city manager, the vacant positions saved 4.3 million, and I should have asked you, does that include the police officers that, I mean, we have vacant positions at PD?
It is part of the savings. We would consider those essential positions and allow them to hire. However, we know that they have faced hiring challenges in finding highly qualified police officers, and that does provide some salary and budget savings for us. However, they would be exempted from the hiring freeze.
Okay. And for Brian, sorry. Sorry to get you back up. Don't you want to sterilize the mic? No, I'm just kidding.
I trust him.
I mean, you had Kyle up there, so.
I trust him.
So we're resurfacing Industry Street, and you and I've had several discussions about the Rancho Del Oro Detention Basin and the process to go through for continuing the work on preventing flooding on Industry Street, especially after, if we're going to be going through the effort of completely resurfacing that street. So could you tell me, is that extension, I think it was a couple, 2 million or something to divert the line out of the detention basin, and you were talking about getting that into a future budget?
That is correct, Deputy Mayor Feller. Part and parcel of working on Industry Street is we have other things with the detention basin, and part of that work also has to deal with NCTD and them completing the work they were supposed to complete. So there's a lot of moving pieces and parts on that, so we'll be bringing those additional items forward as different budgets.
So I, at NCTD, I believe I told Deanna about it, they are Matt Tucker's, receiving considerable CARES Act money, and is very interested in working on that project right now.
Okay.
I, that's as of the last meeting we had, so if you would do that. I know there's a lot of moving parts, but, and I should have brought this up before, but I apologize for that. But see Matt Tucker.
Absolutely, Deputy Mayor. We'll reach out to Kyle, and I will work on that, and we'll work with the city manager's office to make sure that occurs.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And the last thing I had was, I, after reviewing the savings, the difference on what, the page that you have is, I believe it's M, has, huh?
We're going to do that separate.
Separate? I didn't hear that part. Never mind.
So I will second Councilmember Sanchez's motion to approve everything but M. And with that, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Now, M. Oh, Councilmember Rodriguez.
So I've had the privilege of having a legislative aide for all these years. There is no finer person. I have appreciated everything she's done for not only me, but I know she's helped many other people over these 15 years that she's been with me, but she's, and we've had the discussion about whether to continue or not continue. And I think, it breaks my heart to lose her, but I think it's time, if we can accomplish the savings and have somebody, as I read it, you had an exempt, what did you call her? Or him? Whoever comes in, I can't, it was a program specialist exempt. And that was the one I looked at as we went through. It sounds like it's somebody very capable of handling the phones, the, you know, whether we're doing proclamations or calendars and all of the things that most other cities do with one person. You know, it may turn out that we need a second person, but if, I would move that we hire the exempt program specialist, and our aides would be, for the 27th, I think, if you might explain that they will receive a package that would, it's a pretty good package to be leaving with. I think it's very fair, and it's considerable savings before, for the next budget before the end of June, which I believe you said in the backup, the November, or June 27th. So that's my motion.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
In the spirit of compromise and common ground, I know Esther has shared that, Councilwoman Esther has shared that she, you know, she really likes having her aide, and I respect that and I appreciate that. And I think as an elected official, with all of our, you know, life, this is a part-time position, I don't think the public really knows this is a part-time position. I have a full-time job. I'm sure, you know, others have things they do, volunteer, what have you. And so having that help, I think, is definitely valuable in doing our duty. So I'm open to talking about what this would look like. At a minimum, I think that the mayor, the mayor should have his own or her own, you know, I think exempt council aide at their discretion. They are representing the entire city. I think they need that help, and I think I would like to have that budgeted for the mayor, like as a worst case. Even if everybody was on board on getting rid of council aides, I would really want that for the mayor. And then I would be fine with an administrative individual, I think it's called senior, what have you, under the city manager's office, representing the four council members. I'm wanting to save money. That's the whole purpose of bringing this up. I want to save money, and we need to find balance. And that's where the salary savings dynamic kind of opened an interesting door for me that I wasn't aware that was there. So just to confirm, there's 118 positions that are not filled going in, that we're budgeting for, but they're not filled. So there's $6.5 million as a city that's just being set aside saying, hey, we might fill these positions, and that, in essence, inflates our budget to the, you know, the 20, 21-year surplus is so low. Like, when I see that surplus, in my mind, I'm like, guys, we need to like, we need to lose weight here, we need to, you know, eat Roman noodles and no going out to eat. But then I see these 118 positions that are going to stay in the budget and not be eliminated, right? Then our budget would be surplus $6.5 million and not just $300,000. So because I've been made aware of that, and I've learned this as we dig through all this information, I believe that the future council members that get elected in their district, I think it should be at their discretion, what they want to do. I don't want to take that right from them, because we're about to have an election and there's going to be two district individuals. But if we are going to vote on something and we're adamant one way or the other, like I said, I'm willing to compromise, and I would like to see the mayor have a permanent designated council aide and then one administrative individual. But I'm also more leaning toward giving, you know, that discretion to the council member representing their district. If they want a council aide, great. If they don't, that's their decision as the elected representative of that district. So, sorry for the 180, but we learn and we make decisions based on new information. So, yeah, I'm more with Esther on allowing to keep the position if the council member chooses to.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. You know, this is a hard time for anyone to be out there looking for a job. Some people put it at 30% unemployment. Certainly very, very difficult for anyone to be laid off. We do have vacancies that are, have been eliminated in terms of funding, at least for this year. And that was, what, the $4 million savings? Is that right?
At this point in time, we had $6.5 million of vacant unfunded positions. $4.5 million of that is included in the budget. The other 2 million are positions that happen to be currently vacant but are in various stages of the recruiting process and so forth.
Okay.
Hopefully that clarifies that. It's not an additional $6.5 million. $4.5 million is already in the budget that we provided to you.
Okay, and there were, in coming up with the budget and in trying to slim down because of COVID and the revenues that have been severely, well, impacted, there were some positions that while we have them, we're unfunding. So that means that we have positions, but they're basically, it's, we have, we will have a hiring freeze completely except for essential, right?
Right. They will remain funded, but they will be frozen so that they won't be filled and will achieve that salary savings from the positions being vacant.
So we, so they're funded, but they're not going to be really funded for this coming year? Right?
That's one way to look at it.
Okay. So I'd like to suggest that out of, from four, because we have four right now, I think Mayor Weiss has indicated, I don't know if he still feels that way, that he does not wish to have an aide right now. But if what we're trying to do is save some funds, perhaps if we go down to 33 hours a week, which maintains health insurance, which is very critical, and, you know, benefits, that we can all keep our aides in there, would be some savings. Because when you come down to, from four down to two, the savings start to like be minimal at best. So maybe if we could do that, I mean, I feel, I mean, yes, I need my aide. Yes, I rely on her. And yes, I see the need to try to trim everywhere that we can. But we do work a ton of hours. But, but we do work a ton of hours to try to address, especially now. I'm sure everyone has, on the dais, has had questions about, you know, what's going on, what's open, what's not, what can we do, what can't we do. But that would be my proposal, that we cut it down to thirty-three hours a week and, you know, until we have a better situation and then maybe we can go back to full time. So, that would be my suggestion.
Councilmember Khan.
I think it's unfortunate that we're in this spot in the first place. You know, this aide position has been abused over the years. My council aide, could I do the job without her? Probably. But for everyone that comes and contacts my office, that she talks to and gives you a lot more information than you asked for about a lot more different topics and links, she makes me much more effective. She has more experience working on the third floor of City Hall than I do. She has a great relationship with staff. She's gone as far as finding someone's lost pet for them. She went to a different humane, so there's, but they just have to be, and I think it's on, it's on the council members to be held accountable for what their aides do because it's not appropriate for using our aides and city money for political business. That's, it's been that way, but still. And I hope that, you know, when I, when I first, this topic first came up in the beginning of COVID, and we're still dealing with it now, we're facing uncertainty of layoffs. And at that point, I think when we get to a point, if it gets dire and we're cutting actual positions instead of unfunded or vacant positions, then I think we need to look at it. But right now, I, my aide brings a lot more value than what she costs the city. She does a lot of, it's funny where she, she can do, help me in my office, but then she can go to every different department, get the right answer quickly and get it out to somebody and help them navigate the system. And that's invaluable sometimes when you're dealing with a thousand-person bureaucracy at the city and to help people navigate that. She helps me navigate it sometimes. So, I'm, I'm happy to keep them if we have to do thirty-three hours. That's okay. But I think we need to keep it open and can we do the job without them? Yes. So, if we're starting to cut back staff, then it needs to be addressed. But at this point, with unfunded positions and where we're at, I still think we have the space for it.
So, you had wanted a motion at this point. I don't think we need a motion. There's clearly three people who want to keep their aides. So, I think your direction's clear. Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thanks. Well, that is quite a change from what I heard initially. If it was thirty-three hours in the office, I'd say yes. But it is not. For some reason, they think they need to work outside the office, run around town, whatever. And, and that's the, the feeling that I get. I, I just, it's a continued abuse and it's been happening for a long time. Happened before I was on the council. Same with Councilmember Sanchez. And I've had two in twenty years. And the one I have is outstanding, that, that spends a lot of time in this office and makes a big difference in office morale. Because we're, we're the laughing stock of the whole city when nobody can find anybody on the third floor if the council members are not there. So, I'm disappointed if this is where it's going. I think it, it needs to be, you know, I heard Councilmember Rodriguez say two, one for the mayor, one for the, the other four council members. And that makes a little bit of sense. It's a hundred thousand dollar difference in, in the package, or maybe ninety or eighty. But you're still saving two hundred and, I think it was fifty or two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So, I'm disappointed. I, I would, would rather see what was presented than continuing to pretend like we're, we're so busy with, if your aide is actually in the office and working, that's, that's a different story for me. But it hasn't happened and, and it's been severe at some times and, and I'm, I mean, I've, I've had a great run with mine, but, you know, it's just one of those things that I don't, I don't think we're entitled to have somebody that is not working forty hours a week for, for the sixty thousand dollars that they take home.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that the cities of San Diego and Chula Vista do have full-time aides. In fact, I think City Chula Vista has, mayor has two full-time aides and the council members each have one full-time aide. I don't remember what City San Diego does. I think they have several positions. I'm, I have worked my aides pretty, I've been pretty tough on my aides. I guess that's why I happen to have, have run through several. But the thing, the good thing is that they moved on to do greater, bigger and greater things. So, I've used it as kind of a, you know, an internship. They learn a lot, they work a lot, they, they love working with the public. And then it's like, okay, I want to go on with my studies and they go on to college and, you know, do other things. But I do work my aides pretty hard and it's, it's about the public. It's about providing service to the public. So, that's it. That's what I wanted to say.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I appreciate the feedback from Deputy Mayor Feller. And I heard Councilwoman Sanchez bring up cutting down the hours. There seems to be a theme of they're not able to do forty hours of work a week.
She could do more.
Oh, okay.
But I was just talking about the pay.
All right. They lose their health benefits if they go below thirty-three, is that?
Yes.
Is that, is that correct? How do you guys feel about just lowering the hours? I think it's, we're saving some money, we're leaving the positions. What are your thoughts? At least we're making some change. I can make a motion, I'll, I'll do it. I'll make a motion. That council aide position is there to be thirty-three hours and so we can save some money there and then not eliminate the positions.
My only comment is I think we've now crossed the line where we spend more time talking about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars than we did about spending several hundred millions of dollars.
I think we did.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, three, two. Weiss, Feller, no.
We'll go to twenty, which is introduction of ordinances in regards to amending the local coastal program and requesting California Coastal Commission certification. Now, open the public hearing and start with disclosures. Staff.
Staff.
No contact.
Staff.
And we will start with Tiffany.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Weiss, City Council members. I'm Tiffany Chen with the Planning Division. Before you is a proposed time extension streamlining effort as proposed by city staff. The request includes a zoning text amendment, subdivision amendment, and a local coastal program amendment to amend Articles One, Seventeen, Nineteen, Twenty-four, Thirty, Forty-one, Forty-three, and Forty-six of the zoning ordinance and Articles Four, Six, and Seven of the subdivision ordinance. The amended text would be included as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program. An uncodified automatic one-year time extension is also proposed in response to COVID-19. The current time extension process is outlined in various articles of the zoning ordinance and in Article Four of the subdivision ordinance. Currently discretionary permits such as development plans and regular coastal permits, et cetera, are valid for a period of two years from the date of approval. A project must be vested, meaning they have to make some progress on establishing the project, such as through substantial grading or construction, within those two years. If the developer realizes that they'll be unable to vest within the two years, then a time extension application should be submitted between ninety and thirty days before the expiration date. They may, they may request an extension for a period or periods not to exceed a total of three years. The time extension must be approved by the original approving body. So, this is typically before the planning commission or the city council at a public hearing. Between two thousand eight and two thousand thirteen, certain projects qualified for automatic time extensions to address the previous economic downturn of the Great Recession. In recent years, since the conclusion of the automatic time extensions, staff has reviewed time extension requests for projects that were set to expire after their original two-year approval period. Typically applicants had legitimate reasons for not being able to vest their projects, such as difficulty in securing financing and working through technical aspects of their grading permit review. Although there were no changes to the scope of work for these extension requests, both the applicant and the city, and city staff have had to expend considerable time and resources to process these requests through the discretionary review process, including preparing staff reports, resolutions, and presentations for public hearing. This effort is also in response to one of the Development Services Department's strategic goals for the fiscal year, this fiscal year, for the streamlining of certain review processes, one of which is the time extension process. Staff's proposed administrative time extension process would be outlined in the newly added Section One Fifty to Article One of the zoning ordinance and revised language in the subdivision ordinance to match. Entitlements would be valid for three years after the date of approval rather than the current two years. Time extension requests may be submitted up to the date of expiration instead of between ninety and thirty days before expiration. The applicant, the application would be reviewed against objective findings such as legitimate reasons for needing the extension, the project remaining consistent with the general plan, zoning ordinance, and other city policies at the time of original approval, and the physical circumstances and surroundings near the project have not substantially changed, excuse me, since the original approval. The application would be processed administratively and approved by the city planner or the city engineer without a public hearing. A notice of action would be mailed to surrounding property owners and occupants per the original project notification list. The decision would not be appealable. There would be a maximum potential of three one-year extensions. And again, staff is proposing an uncodified automatic one-year time extension for projects that are unexpired as of March sixteenth, two thousand twenty. That's the date the city declared a local emergency. And this one year would count towards one of the three time extension opportunities for a project. A table was attached to the staff report, which provides a survey of time extension processes in some other jurisdictions. Seven out of the nine jurisdictions on the table process their time extensions administratively, similar to this current proposal for Oceanside. Three out of the nine have initial three-year approval periods for their entitlements. The potential time extension time periods range from one year to six years total. Oceanside would be within the range of the survey jurisdictions with a three-year initial approval and a total of three years of potential time extensions. It should be noted that time extension requests are not for the review of changes to project scope or to overturn previous approvals. Changes to project scope would be reviewed through a different process, either through a substantial conformity application or an entitlement revision, depending on the scope of work. Projects also still go through their normal appeal period following the date of their original approval. Regarding the proposed uncodified automatic one-year time extension in response to COVID-19, staff believes this is a proactive approach to help the economy, which could suffer, suffer similarly to, or perhaps more than, the previous Great Recession. Streamlined review of time extensions would not affect the intake of fees for time extensions. And it is anticipated that projects benefiting from time extension review will continue progress and eventually submit for building permits. On May eighteenth, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the proposed amendments and voted unanimously to recommend approval to city council. No public comments were received for the Planning Commission meeting. Staff had also originally planned to present to the Economic Development Commission meeting in April, but it was canceled due to COVID-19. The staff recommends introducing ordinances, amending Articles One, Seventeen, Nineteen, Twenty-four, Thirty, Forty-one, Forty-three, and Forty-six of the zoning ordinance and Articles Four, Six, and Seven of the subdivision ordinance for administrative streamlined time extension review and adopting a resolution establishing the amended text as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program. And that includes the uncodified one-year automatic extensions. This concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any public? No public. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. I did have a question because I should have asked previously. So, so this is the initial three plus three one-year extensions, which is, right? And in other words, for the discussion from before and those projects, those are done, is that correct? So, I just want to make sure we're not talking about projects that are pretty old and that they continue to have extensions? Those would not be called that, we're talking about more recent.
Councilmember Sanchez, that's correct.
Okay. I meant to ask that.
All right.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Move introduction, my apologies.
Thank you. So, how long? So, from March sixteenth going forward, how long will we allow new projects to have this opportunity?
Deputy Mayor Feller, it's for any projects that were still valid as of March sixteenth, they get one year added to their expiration date.
But is there a new process for projects that are coming in after that? This is strictly projects that were before March sixteenth. Is that correct? Or am I putting words in?
Deputy Mayor Feller, this is, the automatic COVID one-year extension would apply to projects that are still valid, that were still valid as of March sixteenth. And then projects that, if this is approved, projects that request time extension would go through this proposed administrative time extension process.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Mr. Breggo, I have a question for you, kind of on topic, hopefully not too far off topic. I think it's appropriate. Just want to bring attention, it seems like in my communication with some applicants seeking entitlements, the DAC, the Downtown Advisory Commission, seems that they don't meet as often as, let's say, the Planning Commission. And we're kind of, with downtown projects, we're kind of on hold until the DAC can meet or in this instance, they don't meet and, you know, and so, what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is is there a way in, in the efforts of streamlining that the DAC, in compliance with the Brown Act, can just meet via Zoom with the public and we can just hold, you know, maybe more consistent meetings for the DAC, like, you know, to where they're at the same caliber as, as the Planning Commission? Because we're going to be moving into seasons of a lot more development applications in the downtown area with all of our changes and we're going to have a, a long line waiting on the DAC. And it just seems like that's a vulnerable thing. And I just wanted your feedback on, on that.
Sure. And that's, Councilmember Rodriguez, that's certainly something that we can take a look at. I'm not too familiar with their bylaws in terms of, you know, what protocols we might need to follow, but we could certainly research that. Thankfully, the DAC has been pretty flexible when we need to call meetings. And I think you saw that recently with the couple of projects that we had. But we're certainly always looking for ways to streamline our processes. So, certainly something that we can look at.
And the DAC is a Brown Act body, but the governor's executive order allows them to meet using telephonic or electronic means, just as it does with this body. to meet using telephonic or electronic means, just as it does with this body. Um, so they have the flexibility to be able to do that. I'm sure our IT department would, may have some challenges or opportunities to assist them with that, but I'm not sure that any of our, um, Brown Act bodies have been meeting. They have been, okay.
Aside from the COVID-19 executive order, the Brown Act does allow for meetings remotely, but there're just, there's some protocols that have to be followed, like you have to be at a public place, those sort of dynamics, and so, is that something we could retrofit to be more of a permanent for, for that body, that body?
Well, I, I'm happy to share those requirements with you, um, but we've found in the past that those are pretty infeasible to be able to actually meet. For example, if a member is traveling for business, um, that site has to be agendized and noticed, the public has to be in a, a position to be able to attend where the individual is, so we've found that that hasn't been a very feasible process in the past. The executive order has sort of opened it up so that we have much more flexibility, but we can look at that process again and potentially bring you a, a policy if appropriate.
Yeah, just to be able to accommodate the future development. No, it's fine. Thank you so much. I, I support this. I just wanted to, since we're talking about this, um, see, see what we can do to either get more meetings or, or figure out a streamlined way of review. Thank you.
And I, I would add, I think, you know, at a minimum, we can also take a look at their meeting schedule, because I know that has come up before, and perhaps, you know, there is a need for them to meet more frequently, and certainly something that we can look at as well.
We have a motion and a second, please.
Mayor, I need to title these ordinances. Sorry to interrupt. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council, the City of Oceanside, for zone amendment ZA twenty zero 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 two, amending Articles One, Seventeen, Nineteen, Twenty-four, Thirty, Forty-one, Forty-three, and Forty-six of the Oceanside zoning ordinance, to allow for streamlined review of time extension requests and an automatic one-year time extension in response to COVID. We also have the introduction of an ordinance of the city council, the City of Oceanside, for subdivision amendment SA twenty zero 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 one, amending Articles Four, Six, and Seven of the Oceanside subdivision, subdivision ordinance, to allow for streamlined review of time extension requests and an automatic one-year time extension in response to COVID-19.
Please vote. Motion approved, five zero.
We'll go to twenty-one, which is approval to accept additional CDBG monies in regards to COVID, and we will open a public hearing and start with disclosures.
Head staff only.
Just the staff report. Received a couple of emails this afternoon supporting it.
Staff and some members of the public, and, yeah, we did receive a couple of emails.
Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here today to take forward in front of you the substantial amendment, the substantial amendment to our 2019-2020 annual action plan. This action requires quite a few recommendations. One is to accept supplemental funds. A second one is to accept or approve this amendment. Thirdly, modify our citizen participation plan, authorize submission of this plan, and authorize the execution of all associated documents. Why is this necessary? With the pandemic, HUD realized that there needed to be relief to the community, so they passed the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, called the CARES Act. As part of that act, they identified ways to streamline this process and get the money out in the community faster. They allocated to the City of Oceanside seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-five of CDBG-CV funds. This funding has to be used in preparing, preventing, or responding to COVID-19 impacts to our community. As part of this act, we are also taking this timeframe to amend our current action plan and reappropriate both CDBG and home dollars. Generally, this plan requires a longer timeframe, thirty-day period for public comment, but under this act, they're allowing us to amend our existing participation plan to allow for a more expedited five-day process, and also virtual hearing process that we are enjoying So as you can see, again, what are the actions? One is to amend our current action plan. Secondly, allocate unallocated home dollars and CDBG funds, and again, our participation What are the fiscal impacts? So for the CDBG-CV, this is again under the CARES Act, we are allocating, recommending allocating two hundred thousand for food distribution, three hundred and fifty for hotel motel vouchers, one hundred and sixty-eight, four eighty-five for emergency rental assistance, that's up to three months, utility assistance, and also senior meals. As part of this process, again, we are allocating some of our unallocated money for the Crown Heights to address some necessary sidewalk and facility improvements. A big chunk of the program is to allocate home monies to a tenant-based rental assistance program. This can provide up to two years of assistance to households pay up to a hundred percent of their, um, rent, and it can, it can assist COVID, it can assist seniors, it can act as bridge housing, it can assist veterans who are in need and eligible for that type of financial assistance. This was presented to the commission last week, and they did, um, recommend that city council approve all the recommendations. And I'm available for questions.
Do we have public on this, Mr. Navarro?
We had three comments that were received today at the city clerk's office, only two wanted their comments read into the record. The first comment is from Joan Goncalves Kers. Hello, my name is Joan Goncalves Kers, and I'm a resident of Oceanside, California. I am writing this email to ask you to please help our homeless community with a Housing First program. We see so many homeless people in our streets. I have spoken with people who are living on the street, and most of them do, do want to change their lives and move forward for a better future, but honestly, how can they, how did they begin? They don't have a laptop to be able to find resources, they don't have weeks to wait to get into a program when they don't know where their next meal is coming from. They can't think about trying to get a job when they don't have money to get their clothes washed or take a shower. Their fears of being safe each night must be overwhelming. Our cities and countries have programs where they first get people off the street into housing where they feel safe and secure. They help provide meals so they don't have to stress about being able to feed themselves or at times their family members who are homeless as well. We can provide resources for people and not just give them a phone number, but walk beside them and support their efforts. Once those horrific stressors are relieved, they begin to see they can have a better life. They begin to have hope. They become willing to try to become someone believed in them, because somebody believed in them. Please read this at your city council meeting, I am willing to contribute to this effort in whatever way I can. This is an important issue, and we could help our homeless community if we truly want to. We can do this together. Sincerely, Joan Goncalves Kers, retired elementary school teacher, reading specialist. Our next public comment is from Christine Farr. My name is Christine Farr, and I'm a resident of Oceanside. I am very concerned about the health and safety of our homeless population during this time of national emergency. The governor has ordered the cities to house all the homeless during this pandemic. We must move all the homeless out of the SLR riverbed into shelters. Without shelters, there is nowhere to put them except into hotels for the time being until the money runs out. This is a cost-effective alternative to warehousing them in hotels where they can receive intensive case management to connect them to a residential treatment program or to permanent housing. With the lockdown, the damage this pandemic has done to the economy, we can expect a major economic contraction, and there will be a surge in the homeless population, so we need to be prepared. The AMICA Emergency Sleeping Cabins offer a simple, flexible, scalable solution that is cost-effective and can be set up to follow the CDC guidelines. Please read this at the council meeting, thank you for your time. Sincerely, Christine Farr. And that concludes the public comment.
In fact, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, and, and when I first saw the seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars come through, um, I, I reached out to staff because, you know, the CDBG is Community Block Grant Program. The original idea was that we would change, it would change communities block by block. The census tracts of these, that the reason why we even get this, these funds is because of, of the census tracts that basically cover, uh, the East Side community, Crown Heights, the Backgate area, um, and I think a couple of other places. So, um, I want to thank staff for doing the survey to find out what people needed. Uh, I, I, I asked a question, what, what is the highest need? And staff went out and did a, a survey. So the idea that, that these, this is what they came up with, food and rental assistance to, you know, bridge that gap, to pay per month, and, and then these other things, utility assistance, senior meals, and of course, vouchers, hotel motel vouchers. I'm, I'm so very happy that we, we have these extra dollars and that we're going to be able to meet certain needs in the community. The, um, the emails that came through are probably addressing the, uh, the home allocations of one point one million dollars for the tenant-based rental assistance, and I'm, I'm really pleased that we're able to have that. I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Again, thank you, staff, for doing that. I know the community was really, you know, happy to be asked, and, uh, it's for all the actions, move approval for all the actions. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion approved, five zero. And I think with that, um, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting at three thirty on Wednesday. Sorry, any, are there any council, general council member comments?
I wanted to, um, make note that, and this is for benefit of my granddaughter's graduation. Haley Williams graduates in about twenty minutes, um, from Mission Vista, and they, they're, of course, all slighted by their, uh, the, uh, this, um, disease. But she got a full scholarship to, academic scholarship to, uh, University of California at Santa Cruz, and, uh, so that's pretty exciting. Grace Sega graduates, graduated an hour ago from Coastal Academy, and she's going into high school. Look out whatever high school she goes to. I did see one note we got from somebody in, in public comments that said, um, that the City of Oceanside was thanking Esther for, um, spearheading the Buena Vista Lagoon. But I do want to, uh, have Peter take a lot of credit for that, because, you know, it was, it was a heavy lift to sway the, the Coastal Commission and all the, um, agencies to change their minds on that lagoon. But the biggest lift of all was by the property owners, uh, who, uh, Peter just, that was, that was what, he understood what they were talking about, and he made a big difference. We met with City of Carlsbad, uh, and, and everybody got on board, and Sandag approved it, uh, a week and a half ago for, uh, for the future, and it's going to be a saltwater lagoon, except for a, a portion of it, and it was all in the, in the engineering that, that, uh, so I, I want to give Peter a lot of credit for, um, understanding what all, all the things needed from, uh, Keith Greer at Sandag, and to help the council members that we dealt with in Carlsbad as well. That's a big deal, especially to the people that live around the lagoon, so, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Can't turn on the TV or look at your phone without seeing, uh, peaceful protests that, when the sun goes down, go the wrong direction, and so, I know I get a lot of phone calls and emails from my constituent base asking, uh, what, what the City of Oceanside is, is doing to prepare, and I just want to reassure the public that, uh, the city manager's office, um, the Oceanside Police Department, they have been working around the clock to make sure that, uh, every Oceanside resident in business, uh, is, is going to be safe, and they are preparing for, um, for everything, and so I just, just be reassured that the Oceanside Police Department and the City of Oceanside is going to work hard to make sure that, um, you know, everyone in our city, uh, can, yes, express your First Amendment rights, we support that, and, but if, if, uh, it goes the wrong direction of violence and destruction, uh, it, it will be swiftly responded to and addressed for the safety of, uh, Oceanside residents. So, um, if you hear something or see something, please, uh, say something. Thank you so much, and, um, that's, that's all I have.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, and, uh, I just want to talk a little bit about the Buena Vista Lagoon. Actually, what ended up happening was that in two thousand, I want to say it was about two thousand and twelve, um, the wildlife agencies had basically said, we're not going to continue to do the EIR. It still needed about twenty-five million dollars to proceed, and, uh, we tried every which way to convince them to continue, but they had reached the conclusion that the only viable alternative would be the saltwater, um, option, the saltwa, saltwater alternative. And so, what, I was on the Coastal Commission at the time, and I reached out to, uh, Carlsbad city council members, um, and, uh, Sandag, actually, Gary Giegels was, was there at the time. We ended up all going, two council members from Carlsbad and, and Gary Giegels, uh, the then executive director of Sandag. We went to Sacramento, um, to talk about trying to get funding for this, for the project to finish it, because we definitely wanted to have it. Um, the biggest issue was whether or not there was going to be any kind of legal liability. Um, in the end, we were able to convince, and I think that, uh, I pretty much twisted Gary's, um, arm. He agreed to do everything possible to get it, the Sandag Board, to agree to take it on. It had to do with the I-five widening, they wanted to be able to have it on the list for the public works. It would receive, actually, it would have, um, superior, uh, it would, it would actually rise to the top of the list for mitigation purposes, because of all, of all the projects, the mitigation projects, it was the most special. It actually qualifies for almost double the credits. Um, the person who did all the heavy lifting, I think, was Keith Greer, I agree. Keith did all, he, he actually was the engineer that was assigned to the project. He hired, uh, through SAD, getting SADex, uh, approval, he hired, uh, assistants in, in discussing the issues with the owners, um, the homeowners at the mouth of the lagoon. That was basically the trouble, um, that is that they wanted to maintain a saltwater, I mean, a freshwater alternative. Um, I am, I am actually very, very proud of the homeowners having to agree, come to finally an agreement, um, so that this could go through. So, the person who probably wrote the email thanking me is probably because if we had, if we hadn't done that, we wouldn't have gotten the money, and we would not have, not be able to go forward. So, um, I don't know what you did, Peter, but, uh, thank you for whatever you did. But really, I think it was, um, Mr. Greer who, who really rocked it out, and thank you for, I think it was you voting on it, right? You were a Sandag rep, Jack? Um, but the last thing I want to say is, congratulations to all the graduates, the students graduating, their families. I want to say a special congratulation to my nephew David, who just graduated from Cal State San Francisco with a BA, and I'm just so proud of you, David. So, thank you very much.
And with that, we're adjourned to a Wednesday, June seventeen.
Mayor Weiss, uh, you need to also adjourn the special meeting that we're having right now concurrently with the regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll adjourn both the regular meeting and the special meeting, and our next meeting will be three thirty, Wednesday, June seventeenth.